Yep, mad one day got caught in the zipper anyway.
All right, looks like we have everybody here, so we will start the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, January twenty eight. Roll call, please.
Councilor Eastman.
President.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Council Ormsby.
Here.
Council Downs.
Here.
Council Rankin.
Here.
Presentation of a town council recognitions, I don't believe we have any. Consider minutes of previous meetings, we have minutes from one fourteen twenty one, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Jacob.
Councilor Eastman.
Approve.
Council Morrison.
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Approve.
Mayor Stewart.
Approve.
Councilor Ormsby.
Approve.
Council Downs.
Approve.
Council Rankin.
Approve.
Receive a review correspondence, I don't believe we have any correspondence tonight, ordinances to consider introduce, we have none. Discussion items, Infrastructure Committee update, we have a couple things on there, and I believe Mr. Bissonnet is the chairman of that committee, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the first thing that we discussed this evening were several proposals for the lot twenty seven Main Street. We heard from both Jason Byrd from Penquest, and we also heard from John Gordon here in town, vocal architect, who has several ideas for that to, that he'd like to work on for that property as well. In the conversation with Mr. Byrd, basically, in a nutshell, and please, anyone else on the committee, if I leave anything out glaring, please feel free to interrupt. Really, the proposal centers around senior housing, not necessarily low income, but certainly senior housing with the, looking at keeping the potential for some parking there, also consideration of some commercial. Some businesses there too, on the first floor, if the parking situation would allow it. That was, don't mean to characterize that proposal around the commercial part incorrectly, except to say that right now, that's kind of vague at this point, several questions that were asked revolved around if any other properties in town were considered for a project like this. And then, of course, what the tax considerations would be as the life of that property move forward. Whether they would need, and the conversation did go down the road of perhaps a TIF, something like that, as the project move forward. The project, some numbers that were thrown around, where it was a four, looking at forty units, one to two bedroom, the vast majority being one bedroom, the price tag in terms of building something like that, the number that was used was eight million dollars. The question, another question around different property that was asked was could we go with a larger, could we go larger on a different property, and that could be considered as well. Very briefly, Mr. Gordon also talked over the site, one thing that he focused on were some of the physical issues with the site, anybody that's driven by there recently knows this, there's several slopes. There are some physical characteristics to that property that make it a challenge, but then again, it is on Main Street, in terms of utilities and things like that, there are some advantages too. He talks about, a bit, a lot, a bit about retail space with some living space above it. And some of the considerations there, he also presented some sketches that he's done over the course of several years, whether it's that retail space concept with, with residences as well, or just several house lots, and how they might fit in there. He, he was asked by me, you know, he stated he's not a developer, but obviously, he's kind of looking down that road as he pursues a project like this, and I asked, you know, basically, what he thought of that that piece, and it seems to, and I'm not trying to hold him to anything, but just the, the retail space with some living spaces attached to. But I, I don't think I've left anything out if either Councilor Eastman or Councilor Rankin have anything to. And I know several others were at that meeting too. Not, not advocating for any decision, certainly this evening, really think at this point, it's time for the council to take a look at, maybe at this point, the priority of what do we, what do we want to see happen with twenty seven Main Street, what's the direction we want to go there, and I'll kind of leave it there. If, if there, unless there are any questions. And then, very briefly, also discuss the potential of a portion of the parking lot that's at Franklin Street, that runs along Franklin Street behind the Congregational Church, the owner of the building, on the yellow building on the corner of Franklin and Central Street is interested in purchasing a portion of that parking lot for his building, and basically, we left it as we'd want to see something a lot more concrete in terms of a plan, et cetera, before we would move forward on that. Happy to entertain any questions. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think you muted.
Yeah, I am, I know, thank you. I, I just wanted to remind folks that if they have any questions or comments anytime throughout the meeting, that we can, you can email, suicide or phone in, and we'll do our best to get to those, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick comment on that.
Yep.
I've had a lot of, well, several people reach out, as far as the twenty seven Main Street. I'd want a lot more information, not necessarily more information, but I, I need to think, like you said earlier about both these proposals, that's a lot thrown at us in one night. But I have had several people reach out that they really don't want the town to spend, like, a single, another dollar on that property. And I know one of the proposals would require potentially not, you know, not written in stone, but an investment on the town's part, so. And I'm not advocating for either proposal here, it's they're, they're both good proposals, and we got to think about it, but I think we need to keep in mind that I think there are quite a few people that just don't want to see the town spending any more money on this property. That's a, thank.
Yep, thank you. Our next item is drainage work for McDonald Street, Sue.
Yes, I just wanted to report to the council that I heard from the engineer, and the, the work that will be, need to be done would, would coincide with the kind of work we're going to be doing on Silver Lake Road this coming year with a reclaimed grade paved. Because that will allow the grade change necessary, and, and so, I, my proposal is that the work that needs to be done for McDonald Street be added to the, the Silver Lake Road reclaimed grade paved that we're doing for what was the Ben Gore Gas Line, basically, that's the route we're following with that. Second, and that would add, address the, what's necessary without having a separate contract to do that, but would be the kind of work that's going to be necessary in order to get the, the slopes necessary to move the water away from that hill back to our existing drainage systems, so. That's, that's my proposal, is that we incorporate that those specs into the reclaimed grade paved, that's going to be necessary to be done as part of this, and that we just incorporate that in one contract, because McDonald Street out to Silver Lake Road is kind of where we're going anyway with this.
Questions? And I assume Sue that we'll get an estimate that, that will be all get presented and all that stuff, so.
Yes, it's just our discussion, it, she agreed that it would be more cost effective, you will, you have who's mobilized for work, and this is a small amount of that overall project, it would be.
And it was going to have to be done anyway, so.
That's right, before you do anything with replacing the, whatever kind of wall gets replaced, the drainage needs to be addressed, so, that would take care of it.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask one, please.
Yes, sir.
What, what method of changing the water are they planning on doing? Well, how do they plan to do that, do we have that information available to us, or?
The, the specifications that, I don't have them in hand, Council Morrison, but I will, which is changing the grade, the slope of that, of the road from the way it is now, coming down McDonald Street, so that the water that, that is now going down over the hill to the back of the ball field is redirected on to the other side of the road into existing drainage. I can't think of the right word, elements, I'll use that, drainage elements, but that, the, the engineer's idea is that the reshaping of that road in terms of slope can accomplish that without more invasive, shall we say, proposals to do it. But we won't have those specifications, which the, the council can look over.
I'm asking because a similar situation took place out here in Huey Town, and the town's solution to that was to put a curb along the area where the, where it was going down onto somebody's lawn, they curved it, and then they just put a catch basin at the lower end of it, I was wondering why that hasn't been looked at. Or if it had been looked at.
Sue, I can step in on this for a second if you'd like.
That would be good.
Jim, when we looked at it, it was, the middle of the road is crowned so much above the field that the water is just pitching right towards the baseball field where it's supposed to be all flowing into the, all those catch basins on, on the other side of the road, and the, at the stop sign, Summer Street, did I?
Yes.
Yeah, right. The water was actually, because I went up there during a storm once, and the water is actually, most of it is bypassing Summer Street and going right to the field. So, it's drainage that, I don't think it's necessarily anything different, it's just over the years, it's the frost has taken the road up and destroyed it, so, I think the plan was to reroute it back down, partially back down Summer Street into the other side of the road, where we've got the catch basins already.
Yes, I, I thought there was a catch basin there on Summer Street downward, at its low point.
There, there is, just the water's not getting to it with the grade of the road right now.
Okay. All right, thanks, Ed.
Yeah. Anything else? Next item is the solar RFP updated info.
Yes, and this is not good news, I, I'll preface that because I have to. I received a call this week from a vendor who does solar, that there was a concern that the substation in Bucksport, which is the one that serves this area plus the Peninsula Castine, this substation, that there were already four major solar projects in the queue for construction that use up, so to speak, the capacity of this substation to accept more major commercial, it, it's not like you put some panels on a house, but to, and so the question is, we have an RFP out there. I don't know how I would have known this, and I've contacted Central Maine, who was putting me in touch with their I haven't gotten the answer yet, which is, if we continue with this RFP, will we contract for something that we won't see a likelihood of construction for, until or unless they do something different with this substation? And I don't know the answer to that, but I wanted to let you know that I'm asking those questions, and that if indeed it is true, that we would be just in a line with a number in front of us that are already in the permitted stage or ahead, that I'm not sure would make a lot of sense for us to go through all the work of this RFP and potentially contracting with someone that we can't we can't make it happen. But the, the fact that this substation with these four additional, I think, is being seen as capacity is concerning because of, if it, it provides some limitations, shall we say, if that is the case, and I I had never heard of such a thing, until we started looking at this, and it's not about how much power you can buy, it's about how much can go back through that for sale, and what that capacity is, and this substation is, is the solar contracts already in the queue are consume the majority of that capacity. So, I will keep you posted as soon as I get more information from Central Maine on, on what this means in, in the land of practical reality, but if indeed it is going to be a big limiting factor on moving forward, with your permission, I would put an item on next week's agenda to withdraw this RFP if necessary, I, I really don't want to put companies or the town through a whole process if we can't, if we can't honor it at the end of the day, so. I wish I had more information, as I said, I have reached out to Central Maine, and I got the right department, but I'm waiting for a subsection of it to provide additional information.
Questions, comments?
If, if we, but I'd say go ahead and, and go forward the way you're talking to, if we're not able to do it, there's no point in continuing with it.
Well, the, the, I guess that you can sort of get in line, I don't know what that, I, I, I haven't had anyone who's able to tell me what that means. What is the point of being in line if there's no capacity, and, and it's unless someone in front of you fails, or doesn't do it, or changes their mind, or something along those lines. And if we're looking for a vendor to have a lease arrangement, what's the likelihood that they're going to be willing to submit an RFP with the understanding that, you know, that it's an if they ever could actually construct to connect, so. When I know more, I'll, I'll certainly fill you in, but as I said, this was just this week, and this raised its ugly head.
I think everybody's okay, Sue, going forward with what you propose, so.
Need to find out what you find out, I guess.
Well, this, this is disappointing, we have been looking forward to the idea of the, that former landfill having a useful reincarnation, and I, you know, if, if there's a way that we can still do it, I will do it, but I they want us to be doing it with all of our eyes open now, I, I was unaware that the substation could present a problem.
Alrighty. Our next item is agenda items, the first is resolve twenty twenty one forty to approve the Bucksport marketing plan, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Comments, questions, concerns?
What, what monetary value are we actually committing to tonight, or if, if any?
I'm, I'm not seeking any monetary value, what I'm looking at for this evening is the approval of the plan itself, and during budget season is when I will come back to the council for items with the plan. And working in conjunction with Main Street Bucksport to come up with a plan that's beneficial to the town and utilizes a lot of different people's perspectives on that plan.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Anything else? Jake?
Councilor Eastman. Council Morrison.
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Approve.
Mayor Stewart.
Approve.
Council Ormsby.
Approve.
Council Downs.
Approve.
Council Rankin.
Approve. Item nine is reservations, appointments, assignments, and elections, we have none. Excuse me, next is approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds, we have none. Town manager report, item eleven.
Yes, I want to thank fire and police for their excellent response to the fire at Foxfield Apartments last night, the damage was limited to just one unit, and there were no injuries, but I would remind the council and, and those in TV land that in multi-unit structures, the difficulty in response increases dramatically. There were many people that had to be escorted out of the building and in, in various stages of health, so it's challenging at best, but they did a great job, and I am really proud of our personnel for that, the other thing that it, that occurs in multi-unit structure fires is the, the need for personnel grows exponentially because of the number of other entities that have to be served, and we are served by mutual aid, et cetera, but our people did a really good job, it, just one person was dislocated and nobody, by a one apartment, and there were no injuries, which is the big important piece. I also want to talk to you a minute about our public safety code enforcement and administration will be meeting with the town's attorney to discuss options to address issues at the Spring Fountain. The town has also reached out to the Fire Marshal's Office in this process, they were, if you remember, sort of the oversight agency, since they have not had an innkeeper's permit to deal with violations, life safety violations. A recent inspection at the town level identified very serious deficiencies, life safety deficiencies that have not been corrected, and we will be talking to the town's attorney about what the town's options are to deal with this matter, the our overarching concern als, always is life safety, and there are serious questions on the part of staff about the current conditions of that building, so I'll keep you posted, I just wanted to let you know that we are, we may be, if some of those options may include decisions that the council would have to make in terms of designation, designating dangerous buildings, or things along that line, but right now, we're in the we, we took a passive role for nearly a year with the Fire Marshal's Office, and letting them take the lead on, on this, and that hasn't resulted in a situation that has addressed the life safety concerns of not only our code officer, but our fire and police agencies as well, so, that's why we're taking next steps to see what, what the town's options are, and how best we can address these.
Nice, Sue, just a quick, real quick question, um, have, have you been given any sort of ETA, I guess, in terms of when we, when we might expect to if they're, whatever the process is, get it rolling, or?
We are, we are meeting with, via remote, with the town's attorney next week, and the Fire Marshal's Office will also be participating in that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pleased to report that all of our emergency services personnel who wish to receive COVID nineteen shots have had their first shots, and their several ones are scheduled, some are starting those shortly. And we are also, through Maine Public Health Nursing, facilitating when they have clinics in this region, if they have extra shots, you know, they once you open a vial, you have to, there's ten in it, and you have to use it within six hours, and and if they are at a clinic and they have extras, wear a site that they call and say, can you get me two people or five people, that's how we did ten of our emergency services people a week ago, was they called, they had a vial, we were able to do that, but we are maintaining lists of people drivers for our senior meals program, and others that are in the eligible category that we can easily access, so that we can pick off as many as possible, there's been discussion of, you know, massive vaccination clinics at places like the Cross Center, but in talking to Public Health Nursing today, and before this, you know, I said, you know, where my seventy-year-old and up are not going to go stand in line at the Cross Center with two thousand other people, that's just not going to happen, we need to facilitate inoculation points closer to home for those who wish to do that, and in ways that work for people here, so they're, they're aware of our concerns, but are also, anytime they have any, we're the go-to place, because we, we're ready, we have a list, we can contact people and get them there. And in order to get the word out for the availability of our senior rides program for medical and dental, we're sending out a, a postcard that people can put on their refrigerator or whatever, so that they know about it. It was brought to my attention that not everybody in the age range we're talking about is enamored of computers and the internet and Facebook, and that a postcard in the mail that has the numbers and how to on it would be very helpful, so we're moving forward with that process to fit, to make sure that anybody who needs those rides is aware that they're out there and can get them. That's it.
Great, any questions for Sue? Also, I hope everybody noticed the Y report, it's good to see them starting to do some things, and they saw that the ice skating rink is, got some flat water on it, so, that's a good thing also. See, where are we, public hearings and, and approval of any licenses or permits, I don't believe we have any of those. Discussion items, not on the agenda, anything they want to talk about, or anybody out in TV land?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to give a, a quick update on the Main Street wall project. Uh, on January fourth, I confirmed, uh, with the DOT that it was okay to spend the MPI grant that we were awarded. Later that day, I reached out to the architect, uh, excuse me, the engineers, uh, all of our associates, and they've, um, done, they're doing their due diligence and reporting now, we should be able to begin uh, putting that out to bid rather shortly, as soon as we have their final report.
Great, thanks. So, um, where do we stand with the, uh, new Fiber Right operators or Perk, or what, what's going on with that deal, I've seen some stuff working on the news?
There's, um, a firm that has been selected as the new owners, they're working through due diligence for the Fiber Right project, um, unless or until that moves forward, we're still doing deliver, our de- regular deliveries to Perk at the same contracted price that was part of our original contract, we've, we have accrued no additional costs for the, for what has happened, but they're moving through that, and they had indicated that they thought that if that was, um, completed, that it would be after the beginning of, you know, into the spring, um, before that it was up and running, but as I said, we're still um, delivering to Perk on a weekly basis, and the, the price has been at the same rate that our original contract was for that.
Do you assume that we will have to renegotiate with this new, or is the MRC have to renegotiate with this new firm to set a new rate, or?
No, the, the rates are supposed to remain this, the, our contracts with, with this are supposed to maintain the same. If that were to change, then more than that would need to be renegotiated.
Okay.
Uh, uh, on that same note, uh, do we know what process our refuse will go through when it gets to that plant? When they get it up and running, do we know if it's gonna be just, uh, put into recycle like it was before, are they gonna just be putting it into landfill, do we know?
The, the process that's set up at that plant is supposed to be that a, a high percentage is recycling, but, but I can tell you that, that the state is not going to permit any, um, that it just be used as a transfer station to move it along to a landfill, that's not, that's not allowed or a part of the process, and they've even changed what bypass waste is considered that could go to landfill, so that it doesn't include any facility that's just not operating, period, so, um, the, the requirement is that it, it fulfill its permits, and its permits are that a certain amount of that waste, um, be recycled, and they're only, uh, that a- any bypasser or other is a, a very small percentage, it doesn't change what the character of the license is supposed to be, this doesn't give them a new license to do something different, I guess, is it just another way of phrasing?
So, so the original tent of, of the production of natural gas, that's what they're pursuing at this point?
Natural gas, and there were other, uh, pelletized forms of fuel was one of, that was another. There were a number of byproducts from that, um, the original Fiber Right project that were mentioned, natural gas was one, but pelletized fuel, they, right before, um, Fiber Right closed, they finally had received their permits from DEP for these alternative fuel products from the, from the process, that they hadn't, uh, they hadn't received prior to, and so the those permits are in place for the production of those kind of things as well. There's a, a variety of byproducts that are supposed to be marketable as a result of this process.
Pelletized fuels for what use, do you know that, answer to that, or, or?
No, I, I'm not, not specific to all of them, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing, the last thing I've got, Sue, and, and I was riding, riding into town the other day, and, and I noticed, um, the old Eddie Mercer place um, is really falling into disrepair. Um, the, the, there's a bunch of windows that have been knocked out of the house, the, the camps or, or the colleges behind it, it's just, it's really starting to turn into, uh, to, to, I, I, I guess I call it a mess. Um, and I don't know where we stand on it, try to have that cleaned up, taken care of it, it's, it's gonna become a danger, uh, like I said, there's broken windows and, and the buildings don't look right, you know, if they're gonna fall in or what, so I don't know if we have any update on that.
I will check with Luke.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody not on the agenda?
Peter, where are you, where are you talking about with that?
Um, next to where the subway is, the Family Dollar, that, those cottages, and that, there used to be Eddie Mercer's store.
Yep.
And there's a house in there also, yeah.
We did have, they did testing, um, uh, I think I'm Rich Campbell, who did the environmental work on the AIM site for the environmental phase one and phase two, last winter also did testing, um, on that property for, uh, contamination in the ground from fuel that would have been there at one point. Um, so that, and I'm not sure who was doing that, but he had been engaged to, um, determine if there are any, uh, there was any contamination there, so I know that that was underway at that time, but, um, beyond that, we haven't heard anymore, but I will check with Luke to see what what the plans were for that one.
Okay, thank you. And, and just lastly, um, the, uh, the property up on the corner of Mount Olive Heights, has that been taken care of, do we know?
It, well, it hasn't, and the only reason it hasn't yet is that USDA has not yet transferred that deed back into the ownership of the, they've not yet released that lien, I contacted USDA early this week and said, wh- where is it, and the person that I was dealing with was checking with her superiors to see where it was, but they, she indicated that that was still their, their, um, plan, but they, she would see where it was in the queue, that, that's the only thing that's holding up moving forward right this minute.
Great, thanks. And I guess one last thing, um, Rich took me around Park Street the other day, and I don't know if any of you folks have been over there to take a look, but they, it's actually, uh, looks pretty good over there, and I think we, it's, um, exciting times, so if we can get that, keep moving that along and, and finish that up over there, so. Any updates on that, Rich, of what we're, got going on over there?
I, I believe everything has stopped at this point until the spring, but I can, uh, reach out to Mr. Wardwell tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they were waiting for, um, it was, nothing to do with us or our permitting, uh, it, they were waiting for something from their own engineers in regard to the design of a culvert for the upper part of that property that was, um, in question between DEP and them, but it was their engineering, not anything to do with us that they were waiting for, I spoke to Mr. Wardwell about it probably a month ago, and he was, they were checking with their, their engineer, which was the issue.
Great. Alright, um, upcoming public hearings or committee assignment scheduling, um, just a reminder, next Thursday, um, at six o'clock, we have our goals and objectives meeting, um, we will do it in Zoom, and think of some good, I think where we want to be, um, you know, we've got, there's a lot of things in the pipeline that we could be doing, and you know, we gotta make sure we want to stay focused and, and, and work on the different plans we've got, and inputs and everything else, so, um, like I said, like I said last week, exciting times ahead, um, people are gonna be looking at us to, to hopefully keep moving forward, so. Item fifteen is adjournment. Take a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor? Have a great night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.